Senator Gerald Stork, invocation again. Okay, roll call will start with Shikad.
Pretty pink, black lot.
Stuart Blacklock.
Other medicine Reno.
Coyote runs Reno.
Not afraid, Ashpadi.
Governor Blackyes.
Not afraid, Bitcoin.
Shikad, Bitcoin.
Real bird mighty few.
Backbone mighty few.
Stuart, mighty few.
Old cross, Ashpadi.
Go ahead, Bop one.
Okay, we have thirteen.
Thirteen present.
Okay, thirteen senators present. Okay, I welcome the guests from the judicial branch. Sharon Curry over here. Then Buzzie covers up. Bruce other medicine and Patricia Rogers. Richard Darlong. And now I'll begin. Vice Chair Wilson is here. And then I think I'm going to go to Dale Lavender. And now I guess we'll go to the next review and adoption of the agenda.
It's eleven hours.
Need a motion? Motion on the floor to. Okay, the motion is by Secretary O'Crow, need a second. Second by Senator Stork of Mighty Few. All those in favor, raise your right hand for the adoption of the agenda.
Don't ask you to adopt an agenda.
Okay. Okay, unanimous thirteen zero zero. Okay, let's go to number four, old business. I'm going to read the title, a joint action resolution entitled, Proposed Memorandum of Agreement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Regarding Protection Against Illegal Harvesting and Travesty of Eagles and Eagle Parts. We tabled this at the last, on ten fourteen, at the October session. And this was in the Fish and Game Committee. And the advice that we got from the executive branch as well as our legal advisor here and the committee was to table this. Because it's been in committee and hasn't been, nobody has moved forward with this, but they want to revisit this with another J A R. So at this time, need another motion to table this, I believe would be the, that's why the old business in both of them are in here. Question of privilege. Floor recognizes Senator Stork.
I think before we call for that motion, there needs to be a clarification of the reason why we're going this route. And that the clarification is that we already have an eagle law in place that has been law, that has not been recognized. And just recently, you know, talking with Senator Cowrunge and Vice Chairman Wilson, they agreed that they're going to go ahead and push forward with an amendment towards the current, the current law. And so just to clarify that on the record, this one here is just, you know, it doesn't have the teeth that that one has. So just wanted to make that clarification.
Any more explanations? Senator Coyote runs, use your microphone if you want to say something. Or you do concur with what he just said?
Yeah, that's my same explanation on that. We was going to use the one that we passed last year. January seventeen, twenty twelve. And I want to table this one at present time, make a motion table.
Okay, there was an explanation on this, but there's also a motion. Thank you for the clarification, Senator Stork. And the motion has been made to table this. There's second, second by Senator Not Afraid from the Bitcoin district. Need a question? Question by Senator Stork of Blacklot. All those in favor of tabling this, raise your right hand. Okay, this has been tabled for the second time. So it's been thirteen zero zero, the record. Just like they said that they're going to make an amendment to the current one so that would have, that would be stronger and be more enforceable, I believe was the explanation of tabling this. So at this time, this is a dead bill now, dead. It's a dead bill, it's the second time according to our rules and order. Okay, now we go to the next one. A bill for an act entitled, a bill for an act to amend the Xaloget tribe Culture Cultural Resource Protection Act. And this was also tabled on October fourteenth. And this is in the Culture Committee Chair is Manuel covers up. Secretary is Lawrence Dietz Crane. I'm going to hand the floor over to Senator covers up. Next question, clarification.
Okay, thank you, Speaker. You know, by the way, I was saying that protection, good idea to get credit. We can have two things out on the table and try and work it out. They want this be tabled again. And that's my recommendation as the chairman here is to table this.
Okay, that's, he made a motion to table this. Okay, need a second to this motion. Second by Senator Real Bird. Question by Senator Other Medicine. All those in favor of this tabling motion, raise your right hand. Okay, the motion, tabling motion has passed thirteen zero zero, so this is a dead bill. Okay. Okay, now we come to number five, new business on the agenda. Okay. A joint action resolution entitled, resolution authorizing the chairman of the executive branch to obtain a ten million loan from First Interstate Bank secured by interest from the one oh seventh settlement trust fund to provide funds for land purchases and economic development projects. And this is in committee, actually. And it's the revenue committee. As, and I'm actually the revenue committee chair. So what, at this time, we read this into record. And now there's been a handout to the senators. Where we put this back into committee. It was on the floor, we read it into record. And I have to go back to my notes here. It was on Wednesday, October ninth. It's when we read this into record at, I believe, a special session. We had a special session on Wednesday, October ninth. And we went over this whole joint action resolution for this ten million dollar loan. But prior to that, to give a little bit of background for those that are here today, we didn't start this just like yesterday. This has been in the works for quite some time. And there was too many unanswered. We want this money to be used for its purpose, for the projects. The three million, all in short is, three million is going to go pay for the line of credit that we borrowed. While we didn't borrow it, but that line of credit, unsecured line of credit back in May to purchase the Aerocrick Ranch. One point five million went to that purchase. It's nine hundred thousand something, the total of that purchase, nine hundred, almost a million. But the rest of that money, up to about five hundred thousand, was used for the improvements of the Aerocrick Ranch buildings, which if you ever go there, you'll see the improvements being worked on today. So that's what the rest of that, one point five million was used for. And then the other one point five million was used for the cash flow problem that we've had to meet the payroll and other expenses, the one point five. So that's three million. So that's where the three million, we're borrowing that money to, from the one oh, we're using the one oh seventh interest for collateral to pay that back. And so, but there's other seven million. This where we had a lot of deliberations between the two branches. The legislative branch, we wanted, we didn't want this money like previous administrations would always get loans and they would never use what that money was intended for. We didn't want that anymore. If it's going to be for economic development in all the districts, for like what we call the C stores, gas stations that is needed in all the districts. And so the seven million, we're not going to be using it. The seven million is going to be there, but they're going to have to bring a resolution when that project in that district, when it's ready. They're going to bring a resolution in here, getting how much it's going to cost. Or it's going to be built, all the specs, that's going to be in that resolution. The feasibility studies for it. Then we would have to sit down in revenue committee, the economic development committees. We would sit down and go through the paperwork. And when it's ready to go, it will come for a special session or it might be during a regular session. So that's how that seven million is going to be spent. It's going to be spent for why, for the reason why we're borrowing that money. But this legislation will be available for the public. So not only that, we are in live stream today. If you go to C T L B dot org, today's session and what I'm sharing with the guests and everybody that's here, the senators, it's online. And so we're being transparent with the crow, the thirteen thousand plus crows. And you could go his side, but to explain to the guests that is here about this ten million dollar loan. And I know that some of us have gotten text messages saying that, saying all kinds of rumors. You know, the rumors are out there, oh, they're going to get a ten million dollar loan and they're going to use it to campaign, they're going to use it for all sorts of things. But it's not true. So we want to be accountable to the crow, thirteen thousand plus crows. And we want to make educated decisions for the economic development that is needed on the reservation. And I know that everybody has their, you're entitled to your opinion and how you look at it, whatever it is, but you know, you're entitled to your opinion. So on October, on October ninth, Wednesday, we had a recommendation with this. And now I just want to read the recommendation from the, well, the recommendation for approval of this ten million dollar loan from First Interstate. The motion was made by Senator CJ Stork and it was seconded by Senator Vincent Shikad. And the question, Senator Mallon Not Afraid. And the vote was ten zero zero at that time, the recommendation for the approval. But then we also, Vice Chairman Wilson at that time brought up a question. Says, why don't we have, why don't, why didn't we look at the fixed rate on this ten million dollar loan instead of the variable rate? The variable rate. And at the time, the CPA Carla was here. She said, I could ask, but the president of the First Interstate Bank is gone until October fifteenth. So in the meantime, from October, Wednesday of the October ninth, we finally got an answer about this variable rate. For the variable rate, I believe we are starting at that, the handout. It won't go above the ceiling of eight, eight and a half percent interest. For the, this is a fifteen year loan, eight and a half percent interest rate. It will never go above that, but the variable rate, I believe, is starting at the new handout. It's the prime rate, one percent interest, currently is the four and a half percent, four point two five. And then it would never go above the ceiling of the eight and a half percent. So it's that, that one percent, and you know, currently is that four and a half. But you know, this is what I believe your question was, Vice Chair, at that time. And so it's the one percent. We're starting at that one percent rate right now. When this loan is approved, then it has a ceiling of eight and a half percent instead of starting with the four point two five percent. So the variable will stay in between the eight and a half and then one, if not the four to point two five. So that's the easiest way to explain it, right? Secretary O'Crow, fifteen years. So this is what they agreed to, First Interstate Bank. And that's just the explanation as revenue chair to the body as well as the gifts, as well as the executive branch that are here. So we'll get to it. But that's, that's when we have to put it back into committee. But there's a lot of documents here, every part of that document, we read it into record. We read it on the floor, we adopted it, went to the motion. And so at this time, saying all that, we need a motion to bring this back out of committee. This, go ahead, Secretary O'Crow.
It was written into record in committee, but it's never been introduced on the floor. That's why it's considered new business. So it has to start from motion to adopt.
Question of privilege real quick, Mr. Speaker. Floor recognizes Senator Stork.
You know, aside from everything that we've already done concerning this, and I commend the revenue committee, you know, for everything that, you know, going through the whole, all things on the record, we know that. The one thing that we do not have is the total breakdown. Because when this first came out on the floor, first came to the legislative branch as an introduction, it was a million dollars per district. I know there's going to be seven million dollars after this, after the three millions covered. There's going to be seven, and there's six districts. It's a million dollars per district. Because every district, we're a border town, Blacklot. And I think we need to be specific on exactly what's going to happen with these monies. And so then that way, if we call it an attachment or if it's something that we're going to work out later on, I'd like, I'd like for that clarification to come out on the floor. Because I believe that's very important. I think we need to start looking at something like that. Because if we're just going to flat out and say, hey, million dollars per district, make it easy, that'd be, you know, short and sweet. But right now, there's nothing to this. And I think it needs to be said. Needs to be fair.
Okay, your question and privilege is to make an amendment. When we come down to the amendments, I believe at that time, we can have that discussion according to our rules, that we can have that discussion with the executive branch and make those amendments and make that clarification. And then we can do it at that time, so that's a good point.
I, I think that's a good avenue. Either that or just, you know, if we had something now, it'd just be part of the record at the front. But if we want to bring it in as a, as amendment, I think that'd be an avenue.
Uh, we don't have that, I believe. Go ahead, Secretary O'Crow.
We still need to adopt it out to the floor.
Yeah, your question and privilege was acknowledged, but now need to bring this out on the floor, out of revenue committee. So at this time, need a motion on the floor, bring this out of revenue committee. Excuse me, or is it? We read it into record.
Yeah, it's never been introduced to the full body, so therefore it's considered new business.
Okay. At this time, we need, who's designated? Oh, I guess. Oh, motion to adopt this. So we need to read this into record. So need somebody from the executive branch, Darren, Chairman O'Callaghan, or is it going to be Dale? Okay. We need to read this into record, adopt this and then move forward.
Good morning.
Morning. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Secretary, Vice Chairman, members of legislative body and Crow citizens, Chairman. I have the, the original joint action resolution from, I think it was stamped July twenty ninth, two thousand thirteen. Before there was the various committee action, which will come up later. So it's a resolution authorizing the chairman of the executive branch to obtain a ten million dollar loan from First Interstate Bank secured by interest from the one hundred and seventh settlement trust fund to provide funds for land purchases and economic development projects.
Need a motion? Motion to adopt. Okay, Senator Not Afraid, Large Grass, Senator Coyote runs, seconds? Go ahead, pursue.
Whereas the Crow tribe is committed to securing its land base and supporting economic development within the reservation. Whereas immediate opportunities exist for the purchase of agricultural land and businesses within the reservation and to begin development of renewable energy projects. And whereas joint action resolution number J A R thirteen dash fourteen, enacted by the legislature on April eighth, two thousand thirteen, and approved by the chairman on April ninth, two thousand thirteen, granted approval and authorization for the chairman of the executive branch to obtain a three million dollar unsecured line of credit from First Interstate Bank, brand the two thousand thirteen unsecured line of credit, end brand, in order to provide immediate funding for the foregoing land purchase and economic development opportunities and to provide additional operating funds for the tribal government to be drawn down and fully repaid within a hundred and twenty days from the date of the issuance of the line of credit. And it was anticipated that this unsecured line of credit would be repaid from other longer term financing obtained by the tribe before the due date for repayment. Whereas the executive branch has made arrangements with First Interstate Bank for a new loan in the amount of ten million dollars in order to pay off the two thousand thirteen unsecured line of credit and all accrued interest and to provide funds for land purchases and economic development projects here and after the loan. Whereas interest income from the Crow tribal trust fund established by the Crow Boundary Settlement Act of nineteen ninety four, twenty five U S C, section seventeen seventy six, the one hundred and seventh settlement trust fund, is available to collateralize the loan and provide sufficient debt service. And this purpose qualifies as a use for education, land acquisition, economic development, youth and elderly programs or other tribal purposes as required by twenty five U S C, section seventeen seventy six D and E. Whereas the chairman of the executive branch has authority and responsibility pursuant to the enumerated powers in Article Four, Section Three of the Constitution and bylaws of the Crow Tribe of Indians to represent the Crow Tribe in negotiations with the federal, state, local governments and other agencies, corporations, associations or individuals in matters of welfare affecting the Crow Tribe. To negotiate and approve or prevent any sale, disposition, lease or encumbrance of tribal lands, interest in lands or other tribal assets, including buffalo, minerals, gas and oil, with final approval granted by the legislative branch. And to negotiate and approve limited waivers of sovereign immunity on such a waiver as necessary for business purposes in accordance with Article Five, Section Two F of the Constitution. Whereas the legislative branch has authority and responsibility pursuant to its powers and duties in Article Five, Section Two D of the Constitution to grant final approval or disapproval of items negotiated by the executive branch of government pertinent to the sale, disposition, lease or encumbrance of tribal lands, interest in lands or mineral assets. And in Article Five, Section Two F, to grant final approval or disapproval of limited waivers of sovereign immunity by the executive branch when waivers are necessary for business purposes. Whereas the chairman of the executive branch has negotiated terms of loan and the loan documents. And with First Interstate Bank, including a limited waiver of the tribe's sovereign immunity and copies of those documents as listed below have been provided to the legislature for review and are attached heretofore incorporated by reference, brand the loan documents. Number one, loan agreement. Two, fourth supplemental pledge and assignment agreement, including approvals by the Bureau of Indian Affairs and the Office of Special Trustee. And three, promissory note. Whereas the loan is in the best interest of the Crow Tribe and a limited waiver of sovereign immunity is necessary for the business purpose of obtaining the loan. Now therefore be it resolved by the Crow Tribal Legislature and the Crow Tribal Executive Branch. Section one, that the loan in the amount of ten million dollars for the purpose of funding land purchases and economic development projects and paying off the two thousand thirteen unsecured line of credit, including the pledge and assignment of a portion of the interest from the one hundred and seventh settlement trust fund as security for the loan, all in substantial accordance with the loan documents attached heretofore and incorporated by reference, is hereby approved. Section two, that the limited waiver of sovereign immunity is substantially deformed, set forth as appendix C to the loan agreement and exhibit A to the fourth supplemental pledge and assignment agreement, attached heretofore and incorporated by reference, is hereby approved. Section three, that the chairman of the executive branch is hereby authorized to execute the loan documents and such additional documents and agreements and take such further actions on behalf of the Crow Tribe of Indians that are necessary to complete and to administer the loan transaction authorized in sections one and two above. Section four, that the funds from the loan authorized by this resolution, after payment of any transaction costs for the loan and payoff of the two thousand thirteen unsecured line of credit and interest thereon, shall be used only as follows, to be determined. Section five, that the approval granted herein is effective on the date of approval of this resolution and is subject only to further, to such further approvals, acknowledgements or concurrences as are required by federal law for the pledge or assignment of the Crow Tribal Trust Fund income as security and the source of repayment for the loan.
Okay, thirty minutes presentation. Who'll recognize his chairman, O'Callaghan? Who'll organize this Chairman O'Call?
Thank you, uh, legislative members, uh, guests. Um, when we first talked about this, um, loan, it was, uh, during a purchase of the Arrow Creek Ranch. One point five went to Arrow Creek Ranch, right now the, um, we bought the ranch for nine hundred thousand, and then the remaining balance is being used to, um, remodel and fix the ranch. Right now, there's still, uh, crews out there working. Um, and then we had a one point five line of credit. And then we talked about a drilling rig. We talked about purchasing farm and ranch equipment, casino, um, development, um, feasibility study, a hydro phase two, C-stores, and a centralized copiers. And then, uh, Black Lodge wanted to buy a church in Dunmore. So, um, that, those are what we talked about, uh, back then. And, uh, we talked about C-stores in Pryor, Senex, Lodgegrass, and Waiola, and farm and ranch, uh, purchasing of equipment to help, um, the farming and, uh, ranching, uh, hay equipment and to help, uh, individual lattes. And those were, uh, what we talked about, and we did do a summary of, uh, some of those projects, uh, farm and ranch, drilling rig, and, um, were not part of that summary because we didn't, uh, we didn't get the numbers yet for that. But with the drilling rig is around two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and we asked for a farm and ranch, um, uh, half a million for, uh, for farming and hay equipment to help, um, individual lattes, uh, crop share, um, and then also utilizing all tribal lands to start a farming corporation. And that was, uh, the ten million dollar, uh, loan that we're going after, and then C-stores was, uh, the one in Waiola and Pryor, we're gonna provide a service to the community, also create, uh, employment, and also, uh, create revenue. And the one in Senex and Lodgegrass were, were gonna be, uh, moneymakers according to, uh, the summary. And the centralized copier, and the reason for this is right now we have copiers in all three branches of the government where they all have three, um, different, um, cartridges, so ink and, and so this is gonna be a centralized copier where all three branches could utilize, you know, and be compatible and have the same cartridge and it would, it would reduce hundred and thirty-five thousand a year from the budget. Right now, we're, we're spending, uh, quite a bit of money on copiers and, and so this was a way to, uh, it was a five-year lease, and all maintenance and repairs would be done by the, um, who we leased from. But the centralized copier was another, um, part of this loans. Um, and then we're gonna come back when, even in, uh, uh, bring back the business plans for each of these. Um, and we've, we've got, uh, the C-stores and hydro, drilling rig and casino development. Uh, the farm and ranch, we're still waiting for equipment costs, uh, but, uh, but along those lines, we have all these, uh, C-stores for each district with six hundred and twenty-five thousand per those four districts, except for Waiola, I think it was four hundred. Um, but the casino development was, uh, part of a, a indoor arena and at the same time doing the feasibility, that was casino development, so. Um, farm and ranch, drilling rig, two seventy-five. And then I, I still haven't gotten the price on, uh, the church in Dunmore. And the reason why this is important is because we could utilize the church in Dunmore for, uh, Head Start and senior citizens, and they could pay for, you know, the cost of, uh, lights and, uh, also, right now, the Head Start building in Crow is, uh, we had calls yesterday on, from Central Office, uh, in D.C., um, there's concerns on the Head Start building here in, in Crow. So this would be, uh, uh, for the community of Black Lodge, so we could utilize, uh, that building for Head Start building. And we've already talked to the Head Start folks about that. So this is, uh, what I have as, as far as, uh, what the loan is gonna be used for. And all of this, um, out of all of this, the hydro is kind of the number one priority because it does create, um, a huge revenue to the tribe, and we will be the sole owner. Um, after Bay, Hydro Power Plant will be owned by the tribe, not owned by any other company, so that will be a huge, um, revenue source. And that one we had at a million, so.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thirty minute presentation, that's it. Okay, uh, at this time, we'll move over to the recommendation of the, uh, of the Revenue Committee Chair, which is, I also chair that. So I'm gonna read some of the notes that we had on Friday, August thirtieth, uh, we had a Revenue Committee meeting on joint action resolution, and we read this into the committee record in minutes. And we reviewed the previous committee meetings, uh, with the Revenue Committee members. Uh, so at that time, uh, we read this, Bill Watt read the loan documents into record, uh, which is, you know, it's here. We read this into the loan doc, the loan document. The motion was made by CJ Stort, Senator Coyote Runz seconded, Senator Marlon Not Afraid questioned, and we, it passed nine zero zero. And the other one was the, uh, promissory note. Uh, we read that into record, and then, uh, Bill Watt, uh, while we all helped, actually, I believe, uh, Legal J was the one that read this. And the motion was made to adopt into the record, Senator Marlon Not Afraid, seconded by Senator Pat Alden, and the question was Senator CJ Stort, and that passed also nine zero zero. And then we went to the fourth supplemental pledge and assignment agreement, and that was also read by myself, and then, uh, Senator CJ Stort making the motion to adopt into the record, uh, Senator Marlon Not Afraid seconded, and Senator Coyote Runz questioned, and this also passed nine zero zero. And then the last one was read by, uh, Finance Director Marlon passes. And this was to approval accommodation, approval and disclaimer from the O S T acknowledgment for loan for tribal government operations, the Talia Nation Legal Department, and this motion was made by Senator, uh, Vincent Crookedarm, uh, Senator Not Afraid of Bitcoin seconded, and Senator Alden questioned, and this passed also nine zero zero. And then we came to the, uh, recommendation for the approval of the ten million dollar loan. And, you know, we had this discussion, and, you know, the discussion talked about the arbitrage, arbitration dispute, and, and we asked if we needed an arbitration law as tribal law, you know, that was another kind of site, uh, issue, but we need one, the conclusion of that discussion there. And then we talked about the ten million dollar loan plus interest. You know, we'll be paying four million at the end of the loan payback of fifteen years, which would be two, twenty thousand, twenty-eight, is when fifteen years. And as we continued, uh, uh, that's when we discussed that, uh, the Vice Chairman Wilson talked about the fixed rate, and that's when we had to, uh, go back to the, uh, went back to the, let, Executive Branch to look into this, uh, variable rate, which we have the, uh, which I shared earlier. And we, we're gonna make that amendment when we come to the amendments part of this, uh, uh, today's session, so the approval to the recommendation was for approval, uh, recommendation for approval of the ten million dollar loan from First Interstate Bank. The motion was made by Senator CJ Stort, it was seconded by Senator Vincent Crookedarm. The question was made by Senator Marlon Not Afraid, and it passed, uh, in the Revenue Committee on October ninth, the Wednesday of twenty thirteen, ten zero zero for its approval for the full legislature today. So that's the, uh, recommendation is for the approval. So at this time, uh, the floor is open for debate on the proposed ten million dollar loan. Uh, any of the senators, uh, if you have any, uh, questions, any issues on the debate? You can, the floor is open. If you need clarification, this is the time to do so. Go ahead, uh, yes, uh, Secretary O'Kro will explain the fixed rate.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members of the body. Um, in a lejit, uh, Vice Chairman Wilson questioned gudahajik in regards to the fixed rate and the variable rate. Uh, ek balaja alo, variable rate, koylo. And pagun sabina, fixed rate, koylo is so hajikin. Kori, gortalish, uh, October session, lajro, always su. Uh, ek, cpe gida, dudut galo, koye chedcheda, heh, gis bazapsa him. Uh, koi, na, bawajgukka, uh, bazapsa, kumalei, uh, kessaitahe. Uh, alnachilishit, ek, bawajgaj, idio, me, aytechke, pusan, um, kene, ochek. Kino, variable rate, kota jay, idio, ul, amina, fixed rate, bule bazapsa, uh, ina, interest rate, klish, uh, change, keshesai, for the duration of the fifteen years, we will got. Fixed rate, kettik. Information, gada, chen, it'll be eight to nine percent. Kukkala, shottain, kuda, maran, uh, jor. Eight to nine percent, kukkala, koyin, kukkala, goel bazapsa, uh, uh, change, kettirima. And a variable rate, inaga, four point two five, he gada. And a, ojizali, apa, eight point five, achale, saidu. And bazapsa, lachilishit, uh, it, it's, it's common sense, it, it, it's better to go with the variable rate because it'll al, it'll always stay under eight point five. It'll never go over eight point five, or right now, we're stuck with, if we went with the flat rate, we're stuck with that eight to nine percent. And right now, uh, we're lower than that. You know, uh, hopefully it stays lower, but it will never go over eight point five. Bazapsa, go keshesai, bama, oh.
Actually, inaga, ina, so the floor, I believe, uh, there was a clarification that was, well, it was a question of privilege, privilege by Senator Stort. And miraga, I believe this is the time to speak on that and ask the Executive Branch, your question of privilege, because this is the debate. Uh, we need to make an amendment when it comes how, uh, how we're gonna use this, how we are gonna use this seven million towards economic development. Maichere, gash, chanos.
Oh, Mr. Speaker. Secretary, Vice Chairman, Chairman, Secretary, members and guests. I just want to, um, clarify. Basically, everything that, um, Chairman had brought out, it'd be nice if we could get that, you know, just put together, because there is a spot for this to be determined in states. And if we can insert that, because I know there's, we don't have the actuals of some of these, um, um, projected projects, but if we post it, then we can kind of have some idea about exactly what we're gonna do with it, then we have some, um, parameters, I guess. But, um, if that, if that isn't too much to ask, I think that's something that we could install, everything that he brought out. You know, we got the farm plan, we got the, you know, the, the location of the, the, um, uh, off the interstate there, the Mennonite church. And eventually, short term, we're looking at, on that, like, uh, um, included office space for, like, Boys and Girls Club, Head Start. And then long term, looking at, uh, like, uh, C-store slash gas station, whatnot. Let it build from there. But I think we need to at least put something in there that states some of this, because, um, I know we're gonna have to come back and talk about exactly what we're gonna do with this, because each, each one of these, um, items have to come back, uh, quickly by our mom, by resolution, right? And so, you know, if we put something there, then that's something we need to, you know, keep, we keep it in the resolution. And I just wanted to make it clear exactly what we're intending some of these areas for. And it's gonna come back by resolution. We have a Section Four, and it says to be determined. Do we wanna leave that blank, is my question? Or do you wanna continue, do you, do you wanna complete this area? Oh.
Okay, before we recognize, Secretary O'Kro. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, CJ, uh, did you get the amendment version, the red line version? There is. Okay, um, Jackie, it, it should be on your desk, uh, there is gonna be a substitute. There is going to be a substitute that's going to be introduced at the amendment stage. And the things that, some of the things that you're talking about might be in that amendment.
No, I don't have this one, the one I have in my packet is the one I'm using right now.
Yeah, the, the one in the packet is the original that was introduced. And, um, the amendment was just handed out earlier today, and it should have been on your desk. Okay. So that's gonna be the, a substitute version that's going to be introduced at the amendment stage. That was, uh, what was discussed in committee.
Okay, the clarification that I had was, um, you know, I mean, that's fine, but the clarification that I had was, are we gonna be specific about the, these projects that we're talking about that Chairman O'Call had brought out?
I believe, uh, Senator Stort, uh, I'm gonna address this to the, uh, Chairman at this time, before we recognize Chairman O'Call.
Uh, ten million, the total amount, um, line of credit would be three million, uh, fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-three. And that's, uh, the fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-three is the interest that we've, uh, incurred since the purchasing of, uh, Arrow Creek Ranch. So the three million fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-three would be the line of credit. Line of credit, one point five, line of credit, and then the one point five for the Arrow Creek Ranch. And then centralized copier would be four hundred and thirty-five thousand, and that's for all three branches. And C-stores would be, um, Fort Smith, Lodgegrass, Fort Smith, and Pryor, um, who averaged about six hundred thousand. And that's, uh, estimated acquiring working capital needed. And if we have to buy lands, uh, but it also included in there is, um, the, uh, the salaries for the, for the employees that work there. And the C-stores, uh, estimated, uh, from holiday stores, uh, and billings is, uh, four hundred and seventy-five. And just Waiola would be four seventy-five, Pryor would be, um, the estimated acquisition, the costs, the cost of the building, all the gas pumps and all of that would be worked, and then two hundred thousand for working capital for each district. And we have four point one for the C-stores in Fort Smith, Pryor, Waiola, uh, Lodgegrass. Um, and then we add a little more, um, and Black Lodge could be included because there's, uh, remaining of four hundred thousand from, from all of that. because there's, uh, remaining of four hundred thousand from, from all of that. And then Casino Development was a half a million, five hundred thousand. Farming Ranch, five hundred thousand. We're still looking at, looking for numbers on how much the equipment will cost for hanging equipment and, and then drilling rig, the water, to do water wells, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then, uh, uh, Jamie, uh, the, the exact number, we're still negotiating with, uh, the, the church in Dunmore, the site. Um, but we have about a hundred thousand set aside for, for the purchase of that site in Dunmore.
Okay, the floor recognizes Senator Not Afraid of Big Horn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. It's your secretary, Vice Chair, my honorable colleagues, legislative body and guests. I have a question for, uh, the sponsor, uh, Executive Chair. Darren Oko.
Okay, floor recognizes, uh, Chairman Oko.
And, uh, I know you've expounded on the hydro plant, phase one, on, uh, after B. But, uh, my question would be if a feasibility study has been done. I know this, uh, hy- hydro plant would benefit the Big Horn District, bring in, uh, revenue and then, uh, jobs and whatever. And I just, uh, wanna know if there's a feasibility study done and if this hydro plant is ready to, to go as soon as the loan has been approved.
Uh, the phase one feasibility has been done, we're on phase two, which is the permitting, uh, looking at bringing in, uh, the equipment. The total cost of the project would be twenty million. Um, and the annual revenue, gross revenue, um, using rates, today's rates, would be, uh, one point two a year from this project. And phase one also determined, this is the feasibility, phase one also determined the construction process would let be, uh, for about two years. Twenty-four months, that's how long it would take to build the hydro plant. So from now until two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, it'd be up and running. And we're on phase two, the, the project phase three is the actual construction. And phase two is going after the permitting, uh, doing more studies on, um, on the fish, the, the water, uh, looking at what type of turbines to use. Uh, so the, the, the study is done, the feasibility. And, and phase two is, uh, about a million dollars. And phase two would actually, um, be to purchase permits. And then also to, um, do, uh, what they call PPA, power purchase agreements with, uh, uh, power purchase, power purchasers. There's, uh, Northwest Energy, uh, PPL, Big Horn County Electric, and Wapa, within a half mile from this hydro plant. So all the feasibility is done, uh, annual gross revenue would be over a million, um, for, for this project.
Thank you. Executive Chair, Darren Oko. And, uh, before you leave, can we get a copy of that, especially for my constituents in the Big Horn District?
I, I did leave a summary of all of this here, I think Jay might have it. It's, uh, it has, uh, C stores, um, it's the executive summary of the economic development projects, but I'll get a copy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any more, uh, questions? At this time, I would like to, uh, ask, uh, Legal Jay to explain, uh, your question. He's gonna explain something in the proposed, uh, legislation. Paying to, uh, Senator Stewart's, uh, question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Secretary, members of the legislature, Honorable Chairman and Vice Chairman, members of the General Counsel and attendants. The, uh, the, the question is good, and there have been several very good questions. Uh, we're talking about a very large loan, and I think there's a feeling of excitement everybody has, I certainly have that. Um, the Chairman talked about a convenience store in San X, and I tell you, I directly benefit. I live in San X, and it takes me twenty miles to drive to get a gallon of milk, or a loaf of bread, or a can of beer. I'm just kidding. Please strike that from the record. But Senator Stewart earlier noted that we don't have language in the original proposed section four. That was by intent when the executive, uh, first introduced this legislation, it was open-ended. We received an executive summary, which we do have a copy of, that, uh, outlined all these possibilities for, uh, business investments. We had, uh, this discussion in the Revenue Committee to fill in the blank of section four. The compromise that resulted from all that discussion was that, and this will hit the floor, Mr. Chair, by way of a proposed substitute. Uh, the section four language is going to provide that the loan, once it's approved, will result in a special tribal bank account being established by First Interstate Bank. And it'll be an economic development account, and these are gonna be business investments. It'll be drawn from that account. The business plans will be defined by the resolutions that Senator Stewart, Chairman Oko, and others have talked about. They'll be on a project-by-project basis, so that's really how we filled in the blanks to the section four language. So all of the, uh, business ventures that have been discussed, the detail will be contained in the business plans, both as to the form of the business structure, LLC, tribal corporation, et cetera, as well as the exact, uh, timeframe for development and when the tribe can expect revenues. And I would, uh, imagine one of the most important considerations is going to be with regards to the revenue generating potential and how long, how soon these businesses can stand, uh, on their own two feet and generate, uh, revenue for the tribe to be able to service the debt and ensure the tribe's coffe. Um, the executive summary, as I noted, uh, Mr. Speaker, we do have, uh, executive did provide to us. Um, it doesn't go into the, the level of detail that would be required in a business plan, but that wasn't the intent. It was to give the senators an understanding as to what business investment potential existed and what the executive would like to do with the balance of the ten million dollars that is, uh, available once the line of credit is paid and refinanced. Um, if there are any other questions about the section four language, I think it'd probably be best to actually read those into the record during the amendment portion, uh, of the presentation, because at that point, we would have the language that everybody can look at closely. And if there's any questions about what the language means, uh, we can certainly adjust that now. But that section four language would be part of the proposed substitute, which also contains the, uh, adjusted interest rate, which, uh, of course is very favorable to the Crow tribe and reflects, uh, a better term than what was originally, uh, on the table. Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Did that suffice your question, Senator Stewart? Uh, which was section four, I believe, uh, section A is what, uh, Legal Jay just brought out, right? A and B, both.
Mr. Speaker? If I may? Um, to answer that question, um, I'm gonna answer it with another question.
Okay, the floor recognizes Senator Stewart.
Is this gonna be, uh, under the A and B section of section four? And if so, can we have Black Lodge included on this summary?
Uh, I'm gonna hand that over to, uh, Legal Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, I believe the question is probably, uh, best directed to the sponsor of the legislation. Uh, the tribal chairman is here, and under our practice, and it's a good practice, we don't move forward on proposed substitute versions of joint action resolutions without a concurrence from the chairman. And if that's something that executive would concur to, I'll run to the office right now and start working on the language. But what we do, what we do have is, yeah, very general language, which I actually would advise we go stick with the general language, because that offers maximum flexibility. And everything will be defined by the jars that are coming in the future. I think that's the preferred route, I think.
Okay, the floor recognizes, uh, Chairman Oko.
This, uh, executive summary was done, just to kinda give us an idea. It, it's not, um, set in stone, the summary, um, like I said, uh, there, there is, um, from what we've, uh, talked about, there's, um, about four hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand remaining in the C store, the four million. Uh, each C store is, uh, runs from four hundred to six hundred thousand. Um, I, I think, uh, Loshgrass and Pryor getting, uh, uh, six hundred thousand, and Waiola and San X getting four hundred thousand. So it's, uh, for those districts, there's, uh, there is about, uh, half a million, um, in C stores for, uh, Black Lodge, uh, under the C store land item, which is four point one. So it'd be Pryor, San X, Loshgrass, Waiola, and Black Lodge should have C stores. And Reno will still has Bill Watts store.
Does that suffice, Senator Stewart?
Yeah, that's, that's satisfactory.
And, uh, J R would have to come through here to finalize the C stores. Um, each project would have to come back through here. And, and also adding to that, it would come to its appropriate committee.
[Inaudible]. Now, seven million, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. And, uh, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. Six hundred thousand, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. Uh, [Inaudible]. Revenue Committee slash Revenue Committee. Uh, [Inaudible]. 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 Representative Staus. This is the [Inaudible]. Uh, 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 [Inaudible].
Okay, we are still at the debate. Any more questions from the body, uh, Chairman Oko?
Uh, executive summary, [Inaudible]. Um, I think they've gave you copies of those, uh, convenience stores, uh, that page. 'Cause [Inaudible]. I think, uh, Black Lodge and Loshgrass are part of this, uh, we'll go through the convenience store, uh, acquiring a store in Fort Smith, it'll be six twenty-five, and that's working capital, the, that's, uh, how much we have to pay employees, and four hundred thousand to build or to estimated, uh, acquisition. And then Pryor, same, six hundred and twenty-five, and then Waiola. And then, if you go down to the total number of, uh, acquired acquisitions and working capital costs is one point seven. And then there's new developments, there's two, at five twenty-five each. So that, that does, uh, Black Lodge and Loshgrass would be in there. And then the project manager, and executive manager's salary will come out of this as well. It's, uh, a three-year salary for a executive manager, a project manager. And then, uh, business development administrative costs, this is for the market analysis business plan, administrative costs. The total was three point one for five convenience stores. [Inaudible]. There's a total of five on there. Not just, uh, the three, those ones are existing, like, uh, the Fort Smith. You know, the, the Old Town Market, we were looking to purchase that. And then the next one was Pryor. If we can't purchase, we build, um, Waiola same way. And, and then there's two projects at five twenty-five each. Total of five convenience stores at three point one.
Go ahead, floor recognizes Senator Storey.
Mr. Speaker, at this time, I just want to ask, at the appropriate time, if it's now or later, I want to make a motion to include this in for the record, for the summary, and in our legislative journal, what has been brought. I want to include that into the journal as the summary for the record.
Okay, floor recognizes Legal Jay. Mama, wo, kola, sh, giu.
If we can do that, my motion, I...
Okay, there he is. Senator Storey had a question. Can you repeat that to Jay? He stepped out for a minute.
I want to include this summary for the record and to be included in the legislative journal by motion.
Mr. Speaker, the question is whether or not the body can do that? Is that the question?
Yeah, he would like this to be part of the record to this proposed ten million dollar loan.
Okay, right, that the House rules do provide that any exhibits or attachments to legislation that are not to be considered part of the legislation can be brought into the legislative record and made part of legislative history and included in the journal, noted in the minutes, but it would also be filed and recorded with the original legislation. So the body can, can do that by a duly submitted motion that would be adopted by the full body. So that's a, that's a proper motion to be entertained.
Okay, at that time, that will do it in amendments then.
Oh, wait, I would clarify that it's not an amendment to the legislation, it's just part of the legislative history. So it reflects the discussion, it's something you're taking record and note of, but it's not going to be part of the jar. It's not going to be part of the jar of this past, it's part of the session record.
Okay, so when do we do that then?
That could be done now.
Okay.
Anytime the branch wants to take...
Okay, that's the question there, so.
I say move, make the motion.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt this into the journal and the record of this meeting of the executive summary for the economic development projects of the Crow Tribe. This report summary on pages one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight.
And then page five reflects what Chairman O'Kyle and Secretary Nodoff had stated here, that Black Lodge and Loshkaz are included in this one million and fifty thousand for the two projects at five hundred and twenty-five thousand each for the record, please.
Okay, the motion has been made, seconded by Senator Hooks. Need a question? Question? I heard a question, but no. Oh, Senator Pretty Pain, all those in favor of adopting this into the record, the executive summary for the economic development projects of the Crow Tribe, raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous, pass sixteen zero zero. Okay, any more discussions, debate? The floor recognizes Chairman O'Kyle.
This summary doesn't have the farm and ranch numbers as of yet, and we have the drilling rig numbers, and hydro should say a million dollars, and casino development at half a million, and farm and ranch at half a million, drilling rig at three hundred thousand, hydro at a million. Those, those numbers have to be included, and we're still working on those numbers. The summary is, we have the centralized copier system, which is four thirty-five line of credit for both Arrow Creek and the line of credit. The C stores should remain at three point one, casino development at half a million instead of three million, and hydro electric instead of three hundred thousand to a million. Farm and ranch at half a million, drilling rig at three hundred thousand, and there's a remaining balance of a million, and right now, we're working on Cottonwood Camp in Fort Smith, so it's kind of another business venture we're looking at.
Okay, the floor recognizes Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body. I might bring your attention to the summary that I already got on the very first paragraph on the very last line, that according to the summary, it's expected to be a ten-year loan. And, but the legislation that we're gonna pass here, it's a fifteen-year loan. So I wonder if I might, we may wanna offer that up as a proposed amendment, if somebody would wanna sponsor that.
Mr. Speaker, do I make a question? I believe the recognition of this summary in the journal could just reflect that, as what Vice Chairman Wilson had stated, that it's just part of the record, we're including that as part of the record, it's not the ten-year, but it's the fifteen at the one percent to the eight percent. And so, I think that was something that we could install, just part of the record. I don't know, maybe you can ask legal counsel.
I believe the, this is just part of the record, but, you know, this is what I would like to add, ilage, na, summary, gidi, hem, ala, get, get an updated summary from Chairman O'Kyle, I believe, would suffice. Just let's make that a motion, that the motion would be that Chairman O'Kyle will give us an updated version with all the economic development amounts, total amounts, for the record, in form of a motion instead of this one. I mean, we already made and passed this, but get an updated version would be the easiest way to go about that, so. Need that form of a motion. Okay, motion has been made by Senator Alden, seconded by Senator Hooks, and question by Senator Not Afraid of Bitcoin, all those in favor of the updated summary, executive summary version of the economic development project of the Crow Tribe with its total amounts for all the economic development projects, raise your right hand. Okay, motion has passed sixteen zero zero. Okay, any more questions from the body? Going once, twice, okay, third call. Okay, now the floor is open for any recommendations or motions for amendments to go down by the bodies. I guess at this time, we're gonna have to read this amendment, amendments that was proposed by the executive branch. The floor recognizes Legal Dale Lavender, all the way from Baipua, Omano Pasca.
Thought I heard some Crow speaking on our new C span, and our new C span was Crow span, but apparently we are joining the world, and the folks in Siberia and China can watch us as we ask them to partner up on cold liquids, and tell them all our stuff is open and transparent, in any event. So, earlier I read in the original J A R from July twenty-nine, twenty thirteen, as most of you know, we had a number of meetings between the branches, hadn't formally been read into the record, but there had been discussions and negotiations ongoing over roughly the two months, two and a half months since. So the committee itself, the revenue committee, actually approved a substitute version of this, which has been handed out to all of the members here of this body. And there are two areas that actually have changes from the original resolution. And I'll start with the text on the first page. On page one, under the fourth whereas clause, and it should be in front of you, it's in blue and red line, and the original paragraph read about the ten million dollars over a fifteen-year period. And then it did not, all it said was with an interest rate. That was left blank because those were subject to discussions from the chairman and First Interstate Bank with the revenue committee and the various legislative officials saying they wanted to see lower rates, see a better deal, and then even more recently, some certainty on how high that interest rate could go. And I think the secretary explained that very well, that you have what is a floor, which is prime plus one, and then you have a maximum of eight and a half. And so this language here reflects that, and so just in the resolution itself, because this same language is in the promissory note in the loan document too. And I don't know when you wanna have that part read, but I'll start with the resolution. So under the fourth whereas, it would now read, whereas the executive branch has made arrangements with First Interstate Bank for a new loan in the amount of ten million dollars to be repaid in semi-annual installments over a fifteen-year term with interest at a variable rate adjusted annually equal to the lesser of sub one, the prime rate plus one percent, per annum currently four point two five percent, and per annum or sub two, eight and one half percent per annum, in order to pay off the 2013 unsecured line of credit and all accrued interest, and to provide funds for land purchases and economic development projects here and after the loan.
Okay, need a motion to, for the amendment? Okay, motion by Senator Hooks, need a second? Second by Not Afraid, Bitcoin, need a question? Question by Dee Crane, Baipua, all those in favor of the amendment, raise your right Okay, pass sixteen zero zero. Okay, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Turning to the now therefore section after the whereas on what would be, I believe, your page three, again in the handout under section four. In section four, the opening paragraph read, "That expenditure of the funds from the loan approved by this resolution, after payment of all transaction costs for the loan and payoff of the 2013 unsecured line of credit and interest thereon, per annum, the initial expenditure, and per annum, shall be subject to the following. Sub A, after the initial expenditure, subsequent expenditures of available loan funds, per annum, future project expenditures, and per annum, shall be authorized only by a joint action resolution of the executive and legislative branches. Authorization for each future project expenditure will be proposed by the chairman of the executive branch on a project-by-project basis by submitting business plans and project budgets for the proposed economic development projects to the appropriate committees of the legislature, along with the request for a special session of the legislature. Upon receipt and review of the business plans and budgets for the projects to be financed by each future project expenditure, the Speaker of the House will promptly call a special session for approval or disapproval of the proposed future project expenditure. Sub B, after the initial expenditure, all loan proceeds will be placed in a separate tribal bank account, per annum, the economic development account, and per annum. All expenditures from the economic development account will be made only pursuant to the project budgets approved pursuant to section four A above. Within fifteen days after the end of each calendar month, the executive branch will provide a copy of the economic development account statement, including all expenditures from the economic development account, to the Speaker of the House and Revenue Committee Chair of the Crow Tribal Legislature."
Is that all the amendments that you just read?
Out of the J A R itself, those are all of the amendments.
Okay, the floor recognizes Senator Not Afraid, Loshkaz.
Mr. Speaker, I'll make that motion to adopt the amendments as read.
Second by Senator Storey, question?
I have a comment, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ilage, I just wanted to, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Secretary, members of the body, honored guests, executive branch officials, ilage is a historic moment, Mr. Speaker. Ilage, there was a promise to the Crow people that there would be transparency between all the branches of government. This particular amendment portrays that promise and carries it out. Ilage, ala, ru, le, both branches, bache, ba, ili, ga, ku, kama, wa, sa, kar, gos, this is a perfect example for that promise made to the Crow people, Mr. Speaker. It's a proud moment for me. Ilage, if the membership approves this amendment, we have just walked into a new era of history of working together. If we recall in times past, under the old constitution, division has divided our people. Ilage, I believe that this is an example of history and a brand-new history of all branches working together. This is a proud moment for me, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your eloquent comments. So at this time, need to vote on this amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment made by Senator Not Afraid, Loshkaz, seconded by Senator Storey, and question by Bala Not Afraid of Bitcoin, raise your right hand? Okay, motion has passed, sixteen yes, zero no, zero abstain unanimously. Okay, any more amendments?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, body. Another handout you have, there are two other amendments, both dealing with the interest rates that were provided in the joint action resolution which you just passed. The first one is the loan agreement, and that was a handout on the one page with the amendments, because I believe the loan agreement was read into the record in the committee, and so the only change is the interest rate, which the chairman negotiated with First Interstate and the committee approved. So on your page one of the loan agreement, under applicable rate, under article one, that paragraph now reads, "Applicable rate means with respect to the 2013 loan and 2013 note, a variable interest rate adjusted annually equal to the lesser of sub one, the prime rate on the date of calculation plus one percent per annum, or sub two, eight and one half percent per an- or sub two, eight and one half percent per annum. On the date hereof, the applicable rate is four point two five percent, which is the lesser of the prime rate, three point two five percent, plus one percent and eight and a half percent."
Okay, need a motion to adopt this amendment?
Vote.
Senator Hubs, Senator Stewart, seconded. Need question? Question by Senator Not Afraid, all those in favor of the motion for the amendment, raise your right hand. Okay, it passed, sixteen yes, zero no, zero abstain for the record. Okay, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, body. The final amendment is on the promissory note, the final handout that you have, and the promissory note also was read in the committee and approved and recommended for approval to this body. The change is under the very first paragraph. Do you want me to read the entire paragraph with the changes, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, yeah, that would probably make more sense than...
Okay, get your pillows out. I'm talking. It's okay. For value received, the undersigned, the Crow Tribe of Indians, a duly organized and federally recognized Indian tribe, per annum, together with any successors to its functions and hereafter referred to as the Maker, and per annum, not to be included with any sweats or anything, does hereby promise to pay to the order of First Interstate Bank, Montana Banking Corporation, per annum, together with any successors or permitted assigns hereunder referred to as the Bank, and per annum, at its offices at four oh two North Center Avenue, PO Box nine oh three, Hard Montana, five nine four three four, Attention Commercial Loan Department, whereas such other place, either within or without the state of Montana, as the Bank or the holder hereof may time to time designate in writing, and lingle tender of the United States of America, the principal sum of ten million dollars, or so much thereof as has been advanced under the terms of this promissory note, per annum, the note and per annum, or the loan agreement, per annum, defined below and per annum, in installments set forth below, which sum shall be payable together with interest thereon at a variable rate, per annum, subject to an annual adjustment on each January twenty-fifth during the term of this note, and per annum, equal to the lesser of sub one, the prime rate on the date of calculation plus one percent per annum or sub two, eight and one half percent per annum. The interest rate calculated in accordance with the foregoing sentence is referred to as the applicable rate. As used in this note and in the loan agreement, the term prime rate means, the prime rate is published in the money rate section of the Wall Street Journal, Western Edition. On the date hereof, the applicable rate is four point two five percent, derived from the lesser of the prime rate, three point two five percent, plus one percent and eight and a half percent.
Okay, need a motion on the floor for this amendment. Senator Hubs, need a second. Senators Gerald Stewart, need a question. Question by Senator Not Afraid of Bitcoin, all those in favor of the motion for the amendment, raise your right hand. Okay, pass sixteen yes, zero no, zero abstain. The motion has, the amendment has passed. Okay, any more amendments?
Mr. Speaker, that's all the amendments.
Thank you, Lego Dale. Okay, any more amendments from the body? The floor recognizes Senator Not Afraid, Loshkra.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close amendments, close discussion, and waive second reading and move into final roll call vote.
With the amendments?
With the amendments, yes.
Okay, second by, the motion, seconded by Senator Stewart, question by Senator Deep Crane, all those in favor of the motion with the amendments to waive second reading and go to the final roll call vote, raise your right hand. Okay, sixteen zero zero. Okay, roll call vote, Asher Dan.
Pretty paid, Blacklot, yes.
Stuart, Blacklot, yes.
Clear medicine, Reno, yes.
Fire, Reno, yes.
Not Afraid, Asher, yes.
Colonel Bloodcrash, yes.
Alden, Bitcoin, yes.
Final roll call vote, could I get?
Yes.
Gram, yes.
Deep Crane, no, yes.
Hug, zero, yes.
Robert, mighty few, yes.
Blacklot, mighty few, yes.
Stuart, mighty few, yes.
Oh, correct, yes.
Goes ahead, Aludah, yes.
Ten, zero votes.
Sixteen zero zero. Okay, the motion for the ten million dollar loan has been approved by the executive, legislative branch, of the vote of sixteen yes, zero no, and zero abstain, the motion has passed. Okay, that concludes the ten million dollar loan. Floor recognizes the Chairman Okow, Secretary Not Afraid, Vice Chairman Wilson.
Oh, I think one of the, what we've just done here is, you know, instead of, if you think back to two thousand, there was a loan that was taken out by the tribe in two thousand, thirteen men, and there was a three million that went to the college to build the library, and the remaining ten million was basically thrown up in the air. And today, that ten million, there's nothing to show for that. Today, we have a hydro project that's gonna bring in revenue. You're gonna control electricity, and right now, two thousand sixteen, Bitcoin County Electric, their permit is up. Right now, you're paying for transportation costs from Flathead to power to get to here. Now you have that opportunity to sell power to Bitcoin County Electric, in turn reduce our costs as tribal members. You have that opportunity now. And now you have a C-store in Pryor, where you don't have to go to the window and buy stuff. Now you have that, now you have a store. Now you can, you know, build a store in Sanex, and, you know, get that traffic that goes there for fishing. You have a store in Loshkra, where you could go in and buy, you know, and not be threatened by non-Indians. You have a store in Wilder, where, you know, will provide a service for that community. You have a store in Blacklot to provide service for that community. And then now you have an opportunity to develop a casino utilizing this money as a feasibility for a casino site and buildings, the largest population in Montana, so we could attract that kind of a destination resort. And now you have an opportunity to take over the lands that are leased out to non-Indians, and we make milliners out of them. Now you have that opportunity to buy farm equipment, to go after those lands. And today, you have the opportunity to move things forward, where you're creating jobs, creating revenue, and creating an opportunity for all the people on a reservation. Today, you've taken, you know, as the saying goes, the bull by the horns, and you've taken your future into your own hands, and I thank you for that at home.
Vice Chairman, motion?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body, visiting guests. I'd like to thank the legislative branch for the vote of confidence. You know, this group is all, if we work together, we could get a lot of good things done. And we're here now, we haven't had a store down there in over twenty years, and we have to drive all the way to Loshkra, or Dayton, or wherever to get a loaf of bread, or some of that. Yeah, but they got good food, they. But same way with Sanex, you know, there hasn't been a store there in a long time. And once again, I'd like to thank the economic development team on the executive branch side for doing a good job and putting this thing together, Revenue Committee Chairman, all the members of that for, you know, again, I can't stress how good it is to work together as two different branches and make a lot of differences and whatever aside and get business done on behalf of all Crow tribal members, all.
Secretary Not Afraid, wanna say a few words.
Thank you, Speaker, goes ahead. Secretary Okrow, legislative body with Lego, Chairman Okow, Vice Chair Wilson, guests, and Chanis Economic Development, got your back.
Eat him up, eat him up.
Well, again, it's not only remarkable, but we're putting a footprint here, replacing a footprint, not only among us here as elected, but as us as a Crow tribe in general. I wanna just elaborate a little bit on the farm and ranch. I noticed there was no paragraph on that, so I drafted one up real quick. Chairman has had me oversight of not only those programs, but other various endeavors that involve land. First, I want you to know that this will stimulate the Crow agriculture industry, just to name a few, tribal farm and ranch endeavor, landowner crop share with the lattes, seasonal employment, et cetera. We'll conduct this with a business plan prior to financing and expenditures. The plan will contain a payback method, but it'll also have what the dollars will be used for in the term. That way, we talked, as Senator Not Afraid said, transparency. Five hundred K, finance, five hundred K at, I'm stretching here, we're gonna try to shoot for a seven-year payback. I know we could do it with interest. The plan is, upon closure of the loan, we'll set that aside in escrow, so as we extend our need to draw down, it's available in that avenue, because then the interest off of escrow can actually go back toward the loan. So we're kinda, you know, upon, again, upon the closing of the loan, if we send escrow, it'll generate interest. So basically, that's it. The main key component of this is the business plan. So we've initiated that through Chanis White Man's office. We're just waiting on, it's somewhat like a feasibility, also with the short term and the long term. Just to give you an idea, we plan on purchasing, this endeavor is, we're starting out first with just livestock, feed, like hay and barley hay, because a lot of the lattes, not only when they wanna crop share, that's what they basically have, wild grasses, native grasses. So in a nutshell, this is gonna, again, create jobs, help the farm and ranch endeavor, and then assist landowners, lattes, that wanna utilize their own land rather than lease. We failed, we also failed to mention within the casino monies, there will also be an arena built, along with a feasibility study and a drill rig purchased, water drill rig purchased. And again, I wanna thank you all for your support, and I hope we can be, I know we will be accountable for this transaction. Thank you.
On that, yes, a whole. Sure, what you've written out there would be part of the proposed, proposal, the business plan, and that's what's been lacking a lot, the business plan, how you're gonna use this money, for what purpose, and when the payback is, how you're gonna pay it back, but that's a good idea. And I believe everybody's on the same page in here, but for the guests that are here, I believe we're gonna be doing this, incorporating this, where we have an arms-length relationship with these C-stores and that. And that's the next step, which would be brought forth in these joint action resolutions, so that the leadership of the executive branch and all the other leadership wouldn't have a hand in it, but that it's, like it said, it has a CEO that's gonna be overlooking some of these C-stores, but as well as the agriculture, as is being brought forth, we're gonna be sitting in more committee meetings with the executive branch or with the designees of its appropriate departments, that's gonna be coming, you know, we're trying to change the direction, the business direction of this, the Crow Tribal Government, trying to be successful. And so I just wanted to mention that, and, you know, just like I've heard everybody, when you come together, when the two branches come together, when you get two heads together, hey, you know, let's put our heads together, that way we'll be one normal human being. He said it very eloquently. So, but that's what it does, you know, when we work together, you can accomplish a lot. But now, the, and this is my fellow colleagues, senators, and the guests in the audience, so at this time, we are gonna break for lunch. At this time, I'm gonna ask Senator Gerald Stewart for mighty few to pray over the food, and then we can, we still have another personnel legislation that we're gonna be, and then also the report from the judicial branch at that time. Okay, so, Mr. Ogun.